I thought he was coming after me and he, I thought he was coming after me in the air. I'm like, yes.
iPhone number?
Is Eelam not coming? Oh, it's kind of. Oh, actually. I won't be down in the middle of me.
Okay.
I have chairs on my deck.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the St. Charles County Council meeting of Monday, July the 29th. We will begin our meeting with an invocation from Associate Pastor Brad Harris of Bible Baptist Church here in St. Charles, and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Tim Baker. Please rise.
Let's pray together, may we? Our God in heaven, we thank you for your goodness to us. We thank you for those that are here who bring their concerns. I pray you just be with us as a community, continue to bless us. May we live lives of gratitude to you and to others around us and help us to be good neighbors to each other, loving each other as we are, where we are, striving to be better than what we are. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilman Swanson?
Here, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel?
Here.
Councilman Eelam? Councilman Hollander?
Here.
Councilman Hammond?
Here.
Councilwoman Schneider?
Here.
Councilman Baker?
Here.
We will begin tonight's meeting, first thing on the agenda is a public hearing. We'll get citizen input on housing needs for the 2024 CDBG action plan.
Arne Deenov?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenov, county public advocate. I'm not going to go through and rehash what I talked about, I was going to say two weeks ago, I think it's three weeks now, whatever the first Monday of the, or I'm sorry, the second Monday meeting in the month was. But I want to talk about a few things about the Community Development Block Grant Fund known as CDBG. First of all, all the major municipalities in the county, all the villages and all the towns are part of a true consolidated plan. The only missing component is the city of O'Fallon. And if you recall my testimony at the last public hearing, I asked Mr. Steve Elman, the person in charge over at the table to my right, your left, to contact the city of O'Fallon and try to get them to save taxpayer dollars in terms of employees, salaries, benefits, and pension. And I don't see where anybody has picked up the phone, my contact at the city of O'Fallon, tell me the administration to my right, your left, has failed to contact the city of O'Fallon to get them to truly belong to the consolidated metro county plan for Community Development Block Grant. And that's truly sad and unconscionable for people who are on their out and out and who need the help of this program. Now, I just want to remind citizens that St. Charles County offers all interested citizens the opportunity to give written and/or verbal comments on public matters. Written comments may be mailed to the Department of Community Development, 200 North Second Street, Suite 303, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301. And make that attention to the program administrator Kathleen Thompson, or you can send an email to Kathleen, K.A.T.H.L.E.E.N. dot, or period, T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N. at S.T.C.H.A.R.L.E.S.C.I.T.Y. dot G, or dot, I'm sorry, not dot, M.O. dot G.O.V., or you can call her at 636-949-3214. All comments should be received and postmarked by August the 7th, 2024. Now, I did some homework, and I looked at the director of the O'Fallon Community Development Block Grant Administrator Alexis Jaegerz, Jaegerz, that's J.A.E.G.E.R.S. Her 2022 salary was $67,017. In the last two years, she's received a 5% and a 3% pay raise, which would put an additional salary of $5,360. And then you have benefits and pension, which brings her total compensation and salary to $90,471. There's a second full-time employee in that department with benefits and pension in the amount of $80,500. And there's a part-time employee. So not only, in my opinion, over $171,000 plus the part-time help and expenses, which is not divulged by the city of O'Fallon, I went to their budget that was published in December of the fiscal year 2024. And the projected budget for the 2023 fiscal year was $229,177. And that's a 56.3% increase from 2020 in their administration salaries and benefits. That's not to mention the cost of the program in terms of office expense, postage, things to run their office such as computers and those type of things. For those foregoing measures, I would again ask Mr. Elman to contact Mr. Hennessy, put your stubbornness on the shelf, and let's save taxpayer dollars in the amount of at least, a minimum of $230,000 in salary and employee benefits. And let's put that to use for people who truly need the program to improve their homes and improve neighborhoods throughout St. Charles County. And so unfortunately, it went on death ears. That's usually what happens with our administration. You say something and they don't give a darn because they think that they're making close 200,001 point, over $200,000 a year, and they think that they're above and beyond us and they're better than us, and they can't make a better government and streamline our services. So I ask that the county council ask and question the administration on why they haven't contacted O'Fallon and why O'Fallon is not part of the true consolidated metro county plan for community block grant development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Michelle McBride.
Michelle.
Oh, sorry, not for the public hearing.
Michelle is for public comment, not for public hearing.
Oh, so, just a second.
Sorry.
We'll get you first, though. Next on the agenda is public comment. And just a reminder that we will put three minutes up for public speakers, and we will allow three topics for, three against. Michelle, we'll call you up now.
Good evening, members of the council. I thought it was time to give an update on the 2024 Seniors Real Estate Property Tax Relief Program. So I brought some numbers today. I'm going to put them up, if I do this right. Okay, here we go. So as you're all aware, in 2023, the General Assembly passed Senate Bill 190, and then you all passed our ordinance in September of 2023, and then the General Assembly did some slight modifications this General Assembly session in Senate Bill 756. I am happy that they modeled their corrections, clarifications after our ordinance. That made it great for us here in St. Charles County. We didn't have to modify much. We had an open period from March 1 through June 30. That was the application period. We are still reviewing applications. To date, we have gotten 10,775 applications electronically. That was when we closed the portal for electronic applications on June 30. We have 17,292 paper applications that we have physically reviewed and entered into the database. We estimate we have about 3,000 more of the paper applications to review and enter into the database. So that would be a total of a little over 31,000. The guesstimate was about 36,000, so I would say we had a pretty good return on our first year in the program. Unfortunately, about 42% of those have been rejected at this point. However, those individuals are getting the opportunity to cure those problems. The biggest problem we saw is with proof of ownership. And that came with people submitting mortgage documents, deeds of trust, deeds of releases, instead of an ownership deed, a warranty deed, special warranty deed, things of that nature. The other side of the ownership proof was trust. People who own property in a trust did not submit pages of their trust document or certificate of trust showing that they had the right to be and occupy the property and the responsibility to pay the taxes. So that is what we are looking at now. I actually spent all day today working the window, assisting those who are coming in. Last, well, two weeks ago, we sent out 300 rejections a night, Monday through Friday. Last week, we sent out 500 notifications, Monday through Friday. This week, we are sending out 750 notifications every night, Monday through Friday. And by the end of next week or the following week, we will be up to date with the rejection notifications. The acceptance notifications are going out on a weekly basis. On Thursday nights, we send out acceptances, and pretty shortly, it will be the acceptances and rejections once we have all those rejections caught up to date. So that's a short summary of where we're at with that. I also want to just ask you to please pass the amendment for Lake St. Louis so that we get those on our tax bills for those citizens in the city of Lake St. Louis.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Brian Rorda?
Good evening. It's hard not to notice that there's been a lot of churn on our library board. As an outside observer, it's not clear to me how many of the departures have been voluntary, procedural, or a direct response to the rejected proposal to close libraries, but feels like it couldn't have happened at a worse time. Following that proposal, the trustees made commitments above and beyond their usual duties to determine the best way to serve the public. Now, half the board is being replaced before they have a chance to fulfill those commitments, including Ms. Alvarez, who championed them. I am concerned that the new trustees will be thrown into the position of dealing with these commitments without personal investment, and our library will be worse off for it. I hope the new trustees are well-prepared. I hope they know what they're getting themselves into. I would like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Alvarez for her service to this community. She ran the board meetings well, provided valuable insight, and for that, she was rewarded with undue flak from bad actors. In my opinion, it's a shame the library board is losing her. On another note, at the last council meeting, I believe Mr. Elman commented that he wanted more trustees with a specific business background. With all due respect, I don't think that was an issue with this proposal. The idea to consolidate libraries was focused on efficiency, specific metrics, and results from focus groups, everything out of business management, business management playbooks. The library, however, is not a business. I do think the proposal underestimated the value to the community that physical library branches provide, and we, the people, caught that based on our feedback. I don't fault anyone in that process. The libraries are not closing. This is not the end of the world. If further adjustments to the library board must be made, I would ask if there is sufficient representation of actual library users on the board. Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Arne Deenov?
Thank you very much, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deenov, county public advocate, running for the United States Congress. Want to start off by saying, after a decade, finally, the administration listens to public safety and is starting to replace, slowly but surely, our crumbling steps here at the Executive Office Building are being replaced. I want to say thank you to administration for finally heeding that before we get a huge liability lawsuit. Now, you pass a resolution asking for a forensic audit of the City County Public Library District, but I haven't seen Steve Elman utilize his $250,000 in state lobbyists at the State Capitol or himself calling the governor or the state auditor, Scott Fitzgerald, Fitzpatrick, I'm sorry, to do a forensic audit of the district without a petition audit. So I would ask the council, if you're going to say something in a public resolution that you pass, please stand behind what you wish, and let's get the audit underway. I talked to our county auditor, and he really didn't know anything about it. So let's get our state auditor involved. The appointment of Don Bamer to the County Board of Equalization, have a couple qualms with that because the county executive failed to replay, or failed to appoint other people who had two or three terms on various boards and commissions. But Don Bamer, of course, gets special treatment because he gets a state lawyer's pension and is a former Assistant Director of Administration, and he gets different rules for different political appointees and favors, doling out the cash and the salary to Don Bamer. Don Bamer has a conflict of interest on the county port authority. His term expires on November 10, 2024, and that puts up some real severe concerns. Councilman Matt Swanson says the Board of Equalization members are not paid. That's not true because he needs to be schooled and educated. The board members receive a monthly salary, which I made a public information request to Mr. O'Sullivan, and he refuses to divulge, but I've been told it's $1,500 to $2,000 plus expenses and mileage, cell phone reimbursement, et cetera. So the appointment of Cindy Gardeno to the City County Library District Board of Trustees, thank heavens Alvarez is gone. Thank heavens. And now we need a new library district director and new leadership. We also need a permanent library director, and the resident, Ms. Bamer, is a resident of our county. Why do we continue to pay Bob Schnorr, a consultant, salary expense without public disclosure? And why do we continue to allow Sarah Evers and Mr. O'Sullivan to be residents of St. Louis City and St. Louis County in violation of our Home Rule Charter without coming up to you for appointment? That's the violation of our Home Rule Charter. These violations of our charter, paying out high six-figure salaries, have been going on for years. And finally, the collection, the abatement of the 1.5% for Lake St. Louis, that's just another tax put on the backs of taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Clayton Chaney?
No, right there. He got something on his phone.
Hey, I got something on my phone.
Oh. Yeah, I don't.
Okay, well, I'll just talk to him.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so my name is Clayton Chaney. I'm here representing myself and several families in the Cox Hills/Cinnamon Hills area in unincorporated St. Charles, Missouri. Today, we had a meeting with Tim Baker, who came out to look and talk to us about our storm drain issues. We know that we had a 1,000-year storm two years ago. A lot of people don't know, our area was also affected in 2020 and last week on Tuesday, where I received 19 inches of water inside my split-level home. And in front of my home, there was 116 feet of horizontal water to the opposite side of a double street or even a triple-sized street. I was not the only one affected. We had about 15 or 18 families there today, families, not just individuals, who have been affected by this, and this was our first meeting.
What street was that?
This was Cox Hill and Cinnamon Hills, but this is all of the areas around. There's other neighborhoods that have received anywhere from, you know, what I said, 19 to all the way up to four foot of water in their backyards, in their basements, in their homes. This is not a private issue. We do not control the storm drains. We do not control where the water goes, but for some reason, it ends up going into our homes, and it's our fault that the city's sewage systems and the sewage drainage systems cannot hold the new, you know, water and climate change that's affecting all of us. I have several faces behind me that were at this meeting today, and this is a serious issue. I shouldn't have to, I and others shouldn't have to expect to renovate our home every two years. We shouldn't have to expect to rip out drywall. We shouldn't have to expect to move all of our belongings to a storage unit. Like I said, I live in a split level. I have 50% of my house gone. I don't want to rebuild it until I know I'm safe. So do I wait 20 years? Do I wait five years? It's not a safe condition for me. It's not a safe condition for me to build a family in. And it's really concerning that I've lived here in St. Charles my whole life, and now that I buy a home, I don't even know if I'm safe anymore. I know other people feel this way, and I know it's something that with proper engineering that's updated and not from the '70s, we can actually make some actions and move forward and make our, make our city safer again, make our people safer again, and make people want to move to a city where they feel their cries are heard and we're not just left to drown in the city's filth coming from the storm drains and what cannot be picked up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was the final speaker.
I know this isn't public forum. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sure, what was your name?
I'm Clayton Chaney.
Clayton, how often is it, have you lived there, how long have you lived there?
So I've lived there for four years.
So I moved in 2020, and before that, I purchased the home. There was someone there before me who had the first incident of flooding in their home, but it was disclosed to me that it was due to erosion while they were installing the new sewer pipe. So around the 2020 era is when a lot of reconstruction came in through our sewer, or our drainage system, sorry, it's kind of interchangeable. Our sewer, our drain system was changed out. There's some hearsay saying that the Army Corps of Engineers came in and did some rearrangement, and since then, everyone's been flooding. There's been other people in the area. She's not here today, but I'm sure she's contacted many of you. There's a, I can't think of her last name.
Womble.
Karen Womble, but she's been there for decades, and she says that as more and more construction comes in and more and more neighborhoods are built, of course, there's more concrete put down, more homes put down, and that means there's less permeable ground for water to be absorbed. So what happens is that water will then go into the storm drain system.
I understand all that, that's why I was asking.
So.
Well, thank you. No, I just want to, yeah. Tim, is this what you've been talking about?
There's a few of them, but this one, I mean, just, I was out there today, and just looking up the street, you don't see any curb inlets. And I know, and I told them to go down the new, any new subdivision, you'll see a lot more catch basins than what they have now. And what's happening, in my opinion, is that the storm sewers are undersized, they're underdesigned, and we as a county need, we need to step up and do something. I mean, these people can't live like this.
Well, that and Highway 70 flooded again. I mean, it's got to stop.
Yeah, I mean.
Shutting down a major highway. I mean, no, thank you, sir, that's all. I, I just wanted to be, yeah, okay.
It's, I empathize with the position he's in. He doesn't want to build his house, not knowing it's going to rain.
And we can't, we can't move either. Who's going to want to buy a house? Who can't?
I totally get it.
I'm trying to find your location on the map. It's Cox Hill.
Cinnamon Hills.
So 1324 Cinnamon Hills.
So Cox Hill intersects with what street to get to cinnamon?
Westport, kind of that area.
All right, so Cox Hill and Westport. All right, that gives me a better idea. Look on the map.
Is it, is it considered a flood plain? I'm just asking.
One more time?
Is it considered a flood plain?
No, there's not a flood plain until you get to Mid Rivers area. So our whole area is floodplain-free, and yet we have, at least just today with, you know, five days of trying to search for people, we have 15 families plus another probably 10 to 20 more that couldn't make the meeting due to other conflicts. So there, there are several families out here that are suffering from this over and over again, and this is a recent issue. I know it's hearsay, but my neighbors and Karen have lived here for 40 years plus, and they say that none of these issues have arisen until new storm drains were put in. Like the one in front of my house, I have three storm drains, and it still can't take it, and these issues never existed until 2020, which is when all of this new construction came in.
All right, thank you.
And they have videos of water popping out of the inlet. And that, what that is, is it's a hydraulic jump because the sewers are undersized. And I think the biggest problem is, as he mentioned, is our design standards from 1970 or 1980, and I'm sure we didn't have the review that we have, the thorough review and engineering that we have now, has, has presented a problem with these folks. I mean, it's just, it's typical of a lot of these, especially in my district where all these subdivisions are from 1970s and 1980s where design standards were sorely lacking.
Yeah, and with the new construction, several water basins and creeks have been closed off or, you know, covered up. One of those creeks is behind my backyard, which is in turn a natural place for the water to go. Well, if you close up everywhere else for the water to go, and it only goes to one place, all of the water goes to one place, which ends up being my house in the particular set of three hills that lead to my water spigots. So. Yeah, so they're also putting more apartments up, which is going to reduce even more area for the water to be absorbed, which then, then hurts us more down the road. We've been told that it's going to go somewhere else, but they're building up these large trenches, which may or may not be just for leveling, or it may just be, hey, we know there's a water issue, we're going to be up here on our high towers, you know, type of situation, and the water is just going to come. And if it goes into those creeks, it's going to go into the underwater system, and it's going to end up at my house, it's going to end up at other people's homes, and it's going to continuously ruin the value of our house. It's going to prevent us from moving, it's going to prevent us from growing, and it's going to prevent anything from happening in the future. This is an engineering problem. It's not a private issue. This is a system built by the county. And like I said, the storm drains couldn't keep up, so we, if I could show a video of it, and on my stand, there's a video of my girlfriend opening up our home, our garage door, to let water flow through our back door, just so the water wouldn't destroy our home and bust through. It already destroyed one of our walls because of so much pressure. So it's not just a, oh, it's, you know, a couple inches here or there, oh, it's only once in a thousand years. No, it's three times in six years. This is repeated issues.
I think Tim's going to, Tim's going to be working.
Yeah, I'm, Mr. Elman and hopefully Mr. Kreifse, we're going to meet hopefully sometime this week.
Yes. Yes, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, while we're on it, John told me last week that John Lyon and Rich Neko, you've already begun a study of the, of this area, maybe some other areas, to determine whether or not the problem is created by our system or, or something else. And of course, if we aren't, if we've created the problem, we're, we're going to have to do something to fix it.
Can we get a design consultant? I mean, I'm not, I mean, this is something we need to get some of the, everybody has expertise in drainage.
This is a, this is a situation, reminds me of what, 25, 30 years ago, when the problem was people on septic tanks? And there were septic tanks, Mr. Hammond will remember this, and we had septic tanks back in the '70s. People came out to St. St. Charles County, built homes. It was cheaper, building codes weren't as tough, didn't require as much in terms of drainage and so forth, and we permitted people to have septic tanks. Well, eventually, the state started coming down on these people because the one acre we required wasn't sufficient, and they were going to get, you know, they were going to get their homes condemned if they, if they didn't do something about septic tanks. What we did then, and what we may need to look at doing now, is, is a neighborhood improvement district. That's what we did years ago to get rid of these septic tanks. And what, what that is, is we go ahead, the county fronts the money, fronts the money, and then the people who are benefiting from this over 20 or 30 years will, will pay off the bonds. But I think that, that is the, that's what we've done in the past. And if somebody has a better, a better solution, obviously, we'll listen to it.
What if the public drainage system is undersized? I mean, then, then whose responsibility is it then?
Well, Tim, as you'll, as you know, based upon, you know, your career and your expertise is that in a storm event like we had last week and the one in 2020, there's no storm system in the region or in the nation that's designed to handle those type of flows. I mean, a storm system has two components, the pipe system and overland flow passages. And what we're finding in a lot of these older subdivisions that were built in the '70s, '80s, and '90s, is that a lot of those overland flow passages, so when the storm source can't handle the water, the water's supposed to run between the houses and get into the natural water courses, that over time, homers have landscaped their yards, they've built a ditch, and they put a shed, and they have blocked those overland flow passages. And that's resulting in flooding in some of these isolated areas. Now, is that the case here? We don't know. We haven't finished that, Kate, looking at that, but that, a lot of times, this water just can't flow between the houses like it used to.
Just from looking at it, it just looks like there's not enough inlets catching it, so it's all that water's coming down to the, the bottom, and the inlets can't take it, and then it's, it's flooding, and then the floodwater's going down to this gentleman's house. I mean, it just, I'm just looking up at the street, there's no curb inlets, and I just know, I just know from an engineering standard, that's not normal. I mean, it's just not.
And this isn't, this isn't a sewage problem. This is a storm drain.
Well, he's using an example of how.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that.
All right, well, you know, you've, you've certainly, you know, gotten our attention. We're going to, we're going to have people that are going to, you know, take a look at it, and, you know, hopefully, we can, you know, we can help you.
And with, with the size of people, this isn't an issue we want to give up. This is not something we're going to stop, and I do intend to attend as many meetings as I can to make sure this issue gets met because people's lives are at stake.
Thank you, sir.
That's what I want to, appreciate it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Lori?
That was the final speaker.
That was the final speaker, okay. All right, do we have an oral report from the county executive?
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed. First up is Bill number fifty-three oh three for final passage.
Bill number five-three zero three, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance, and one approving the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-five, under the Community Development Block Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan.
Okay, questions or comments on fifty-three oh three? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero three, an ordinance relating to housing and community assistance, and one, approving the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan for St. Charles County, Missouri, in its capacity as an urban county for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-five, under the Community Development Block Grant Program of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the county executive to execute all documents or certifications required for submittal to HUD with the action plan, and two, further authorizing the county executive to execute the funding approval agreements that HUD shall require upon approving the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan. Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Okay, Bill number fifty-three oh three passes. Next up is Bill number fifty-three oh four.
Bill number five-three zero four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the two thousand and seventeen agreement entered into between St. Charles County and the St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay, questions or comments on fifty-three oh five?
Oh, four.
Fifty-three oh four, I am sorry. Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero four, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the two thousand and seventeen agreement entered into between St. Charles County and the St. Charles County Soil and Water Conservation District. Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Bill fifty-three oh four passes. Next up is Bill number fifty-three oh five.
Bill number five-three zero five, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County and the City of Lake St. Louis for a collection of taxes and fees for the collection of special tax bills for the abatement of noxious weeds and tall grass.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
I got some questions. Go ahead. Why are we doing this for Lake St. Louis?
Well, I think we also collect some things for the City of St. Charles. Michelle could probably tell you more. I don't know, we might even do it for some others, too. I know we do, we do levy districts and some other things as well.
We call these environmental assessments, and currently, we collect for the City of St. Charles, City of St. Peters, City of O'Fallon. This is just another city. We also do it for the county code abatement or code enforcement expenses. So it's, we're expanding the services we provide to the City of Lake St. Louis. We first started collecting for them in the two thousand and twenty-three tax year. They used to collect their own city tax, and then we have signed them, and we get a county commission for collecting their taxes. When they came on board, they had us do their water line fees and their sewer fees, just like the other major cities do, and now they're asking us to do their environmental assessment collections, just like we do for Wentzville, St. Charles, St. Peters, O'Fallon.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero five, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County and the City of Lake St. Louis for collection of taxes and fees for the collection of special tax bills for the abatement of noxious weeds and tall grass. Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Okay, Bill number fifty-three oh five passes. Next up is Bill number fifty-three oh six.
Bill number five-three zero six, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to a grant funding next generation nine-one-one between St. Charles County and the Missouri nine-one-one Services Board.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero six, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement relating to a grant funding next generation nine-one-one between St. Charles County and the Missouri nine-one-one Services Board. Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Bill number fifty-three oh six passes. Next up is Bill number fifty-three oh seven.
Bill number five-three zero seven, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Department of Public Health and the United States Food and Drug Administration to enter into a confidentiality agreement to facilitate sharing of certain non-public information.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero seven, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement between St. Charles County Department of Public Health and the United States Food and Drug Administration to enter into a confidentiality agreement to facilitate sharing of certain non-public information. Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, Bill fifty-three oh seven passes. Last bill for final passage, fifty-three oh eight.
Bill number five-three zero eight, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute amendment number three to program services contract number KQ two-three-zero-zero five-two-four-three-two with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement.
Okay, questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bill number five-three zero eight, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute amendment number three to program services contract number KQ two-three-zero-zero five-two-four-three-two with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for violent death and overdose death surveillance reimbursement. Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Swanson.
Yes.
Councilman Brazel.
Yes.
Councilman Elam.
Yes.
Councilman Holland.
Yes.
Councilman Hammond.
Yes.
Bill number fifty-three oh eight passes. That concludes our bills for final passage. Now bills for introduction, beginning with Bill fifty-three oh nine.
Bill fifty-three oh nine, requested by, by Carl Burt, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement and memorandums of understanding with the St. Charles, Lincoln, and Warren County Continuum of Care, the Lincoln County Public Housing Authority, and Northeast Community Action Corporation for services related to non-elderly disabled residents.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to Bill number fifty-three ten.
Bill number fifty-three ten, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement and memorandums of understanding in conjunction therewith with the Missouri Department of Social Services, Children's Division, St. Charles, Lincoln, and Warren County Continuum of Care, and Northeast Community Action Corporation for services related to foster care youth.
Questions or comments on fifty-three ten? Okay, seeing none, we move on to Bill number fifty-three eleven.
Bill number fifty-three eleven, requested by John Lyon, sponsored by Mike Elam, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute off-system bridge program agreement, federal project STP dash seven-three-zero-two-six-seventy-eight with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for additional funds for the reconstruction of Gudermuth Road, Old Gudermuth Road to Motherhead Road.
Questions or comments?
Quick question. What, when is this project supposed to start? I thought, John?
I'll repeat that, Tim.
Gudermuth, when is, when is the project supposed to start construction?
On Gudermuth?
Yeah.
John, what is the most proceed?
I thought I already had, and I'll say, don't remember at this point. I can get that for you though tomorrow.
Okay, 'cause I thought it was like we were weeks away when we approved the construction contract, so.
If it hasn't, it should be any time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we move on to Bill number fifty-three twelve.
Bill number fifty-three twelve, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a transportation enhancements funds program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the interstate drive shared use path, federal project TAP dash seven-three-oh-three-six-two-eight.
Questions or comments on fifty-three twelve? Seeing none, we move on to fifty-three thirteen.
Bill number fifty-three thirteen, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance approving execution of cost of proportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to coordinate the participation of St. Charles County and the cost of the commission's public improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County line to the Missouri River. Job number WMSCF-two-four-Q-SL-two-four-zero-zero-one-three-six-zero.
Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we move on to Bill number fifty-three fourteen.
Bill number fifty-three fourteen, requested by Brenda Hinton, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance waiving liquor license fees for certain concession operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Questions or comments? Seeing, we move on to Bill number fifty-three fifteen.
Bill number fifty-three fifteen, requested by Lori Meyer, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designee to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Higher Education and Workforce Development and the St. Charles County Department of Workforce and Business Development related to the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, PY-two-four-WIOA Youth Formula Funds, contract number P-zero-nine-nine-two-five-zero-zero-zero-one-one.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we move to Bill number fifty-six sixteen.
Bill number fifty-three sixteen.
I think that's incorrect. I think it should really be fifty-three sixteen if they're in order.
Bill number fifty-three sixteen, requested by Chief Kurt Friss, sponsored by Terry Hollander, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement relating to the Crisis Intervention Program Grant between St. Charles County and St. Louis County.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, the last bill for introduction is Bill fifty-three seventeen.
Bill fifty-three seventeen, requested by Chief Kurt Friss, sponsored by council as